Do we leave this in a moment of silence?
What do you think?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That roll call, please.
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushden.
Present.
Commissioner Bonnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sodislito.
Here.
Commissioner Brentenbach, absent. Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Six one.
Yes, she's absent excuse, she's gone.
Yes.
Alright, so then that brings us to communications, proclamations and presentations. Do we have any?
Nope.
No, so then that brings us then to a board approval of minutes. Oh, yeah, when we get to that.
I wonder it wouldn't open.
Do we have any minutes we want to approve? We're just gonna wait.
I'm sorry, you said minutes, I thought you said minutes.
Yes.
I would move to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of Tuesday, December 9.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Six.
Commissioner what?
Six zero.
I would move to approve the minutes of the five-year Committee for Parks, Recreation, and Public Safety Plan, Publicary.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
I'd like to wait on the executive minutes.
Okay, yeah, because we do have to get one thing corrected in them as it is, so. Alright, so then that brings us to the approval of the agenda. I do have at least one late edition, I don't think you all have a copy of it, the union of agreements.
Where do you want to put that?
At the very end.
Was an email sent over nervous to that today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
So it'll be nine F.
Nine what?
Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six zero. So we now have an agenda, so then that brings us to public comment. Please come forward.
Gwen Allgayer, Cleveland Township. I want to start by thanking all of you for the hard work you put in to managing the finances in our county. It is a lot of work. And your hard work on the committees, we appreciate everything you do for us. I was reflecting on last week's meeting, and I have one concern. I think, the more I thought about it, I was concerned about an attitude and suggestions regarding the early childhood village. I'd like to remind you that that passed, that the citizens of this county passed that and said in their vote that they want that village and they want the young children of this county to be served. And for those of you who worked on this, I want to thank you. I was concerned about the suggestion of study groups and forty-two people who are experts in their field, be they educators or grandparents, worked on this. It's actually been worked on for years. It is for the good of the children of this county, which means it is for the good of our county. We need to be doing things that build, and that builds. I want to encourage you to expedite the will of the people. Your job is to make the will, enable the will of the people, not to obstruct it. So, I hope that you will go with what was voted for, that you will expedite and not be an obstacle. It is the will of the people, and that is your job, to serve us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We left with each of you a copy of a letter, "Empty Houses All Around," in the Record Eagle, on the eleventh of December, written by Alexis Whitman.
Could you state your name, please?
Name is Steve McCullough. This is a question that I would like to raise. First of all, the airport management is on the agenda, and I have a series of questions about the airport management. Obviously, lots of harm has been done the way it's been run for years, because we've got to fix something now, I don't know what it is. My questions are, what's broken, can it be easily fixed? What has been? And who wants to change it? I don't know who the moving party is in all this, but I don't think anything is that badly broken, that can't be fixed very easily without changing the whole scheme of things. On affordable housing, regarding the letter, it appears that most government officials are unable to comprehend that the free market and that the misguided approach, that everybody who reaches eighteen must be able to have a right to have any housing they wish at any time, even if it has to be subsidized. That seems to be the myth we are creating for ourselves and the young people of today. This letter that I gave you all clears it up very well. My wife and I both lived in other cities throughout the country, and we found a way. But there were times when we were married, we could not afford even the most basic housing we had. No, we'd be happy and tickle pink if somebody would order somebody else to pay for our housing, which we are trying to do most of the time. Governments are intervening a lot of times into this area, which I think is very dangerous. At times, we as public officials think we are omniscient and omnipotent, particularly when we have the public's money to toss around at times. I see Traverse City is considering that, giving tax breaks now to housing, ensuring that developers can become wealthy in the future. That to me is not right. You always have the poor among you, and it's impossible to have enough housing. Do you think we can create it from thin air, or we can have a million meetings and a million discussions to create it to happen? It didn't happen sixty, seventy years ago when I was young, and it's not going to happen tomorrow either, no matter how much effort you put forth. It's the same way with early childhood development. You can throw billions of dollars on it, but if the people and the culture don't allow for the proper handling of children, it ain't going to be fixed. So, we'll talk about some of these things later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, please come forward.
David McCullough, Sutton State Township, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for the fine work that you do throughout the year. I know it's hard and unrewarding sometimes, and you get criticized a lot, but I tell you, we're with you. And I wouldn't think to insult your intelligence by telling you what your job is, how to represent the people, and what to do on behalf of the people, because I think you all know that. That's why you're here. I'd like to wish you all a Christ under Christmas and a blessed New Year. Thanks again.
Thank you, David.
You too.
Any other public comment? Please.
Eric Winkelman, Glen River Township, also a member of Leland County Planning Commission. I'd like to second my fellow commissioners' comments about a happy, healthy, wonderful, and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. So then that would bring us to the airport governance options. Just want to make sure everyone has a copy of this, I put it on your desk, I'm sure you have a chance to read it. It just emailed to me this afternoon, but it's from Mr. Klein from the airport. Commissioner Rushden.
I would like to make the motion to allow the Administrator, Janek, to work with Grand Traverse County to gather additional information on the airport governance model, the options for review, and bring that pertinent information back to this board.
That is the second item here. We're supposed to be talking about public hearing dates initially.
Oh.
But I'll support that motion.
We have a motion out before.
Yeah, so we'll do that, and then we'll go back to set the public hearing dates.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say that the lawyer for the airport is here, it's Carrie Zeitz, and if we have questions, maybe we can have her help us with them.
Actually, just a quick update, Mr. Alger, Mr. Klein, I are meeting tomorrow at 2:30. I took notes from last week's meeting. If you have any thoughts or ideas, let me know tonight or email them. Commissioner Ann Sorgi came up with a question already this evening. If you have other things you'd like to review, discuss, have me brought up, contact me before 2:30 tomorrow. And I'm sure that we'll have other meetings, too. But if you think of something that has not been brought up last week, feel free to let me know about it.
So that's, this is authorizing him to go ahead with this meeting. So, are there any other questions or statements about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes forward at two.
Troy and Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move that we schedule a public hearing meeting for sometime in January to consider the work of, that our administrator brings back to us and answer the public's questions and concerns about whatever direction we decide to pursue.
Do we want to try to pick a date?
No.
I'm sorry. Yes.
I suggest we do it at our regular monthly board meeting.
Beforehand, or?
You want it sooner?
No, no, before the meeting, I'm asking.
Yeah, you know, at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
You know, playing with Parks and Rec.
So at the executive meeting, or do you want to do it at, or do it at both of them? Because one, you know, I know one of the statements was to try to accommodate people who are working so that they could come and talk about it, too. So that would be the evening one, and then during the day, we could have that.
Could I suggest that maybe if you want to do that, you do it at 9:00 AM and at 7:00 PM?
Yep.
At the very beginning of both meetings?
I'll amend my motion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have a second at any by, I didn't really.
I'll second that.
Okay. Because we, yeah, we thought we were talking about dates, that's why.
Right.
Yes.
I think it would be prudent on our part, first, for the commissioners to get enough information in regards to this. And when we do go to our public comment or public input meeting, which I'm all for, if we want to have more than two, I'm not opposed to that. I think it's very important that we seek all input from all of the citizens. But I think that that time, we should allocate enough time. We may have a room full of fifty people that want to have a robust conversation about that, and to have that, you know, prior to a morning meeting doesn't really allow us enough time to address the public. I mean, this is all about discovery, you might say, not just for you, but for our community. And I anticipate that we're going to have a lot of questions about that. There were some presented today at public comment, you know? We need to, as our administrators, work together through some of these issues to see, we all know we have to make a change. We have to decide what's, what's the best fit for Leland County, but we also have to remember it's not just Leland County, it's Leland and Grand Traverse County. So at some point, you know, there has to be some sort of a consensus on going forward on this issue. I am open to conversation, I'm open to meetings, and I'm open, I want everybody to learn every little nugget as far as commissioners and the public, so that they're fully aware of the obstacles, the benefits, the drawbacks, because there's all of those things in both forms. So, I would like to see time set aside specifically for that. We may ask for certain people to come and present to our public so that, because we don't have all the answers, I don't know that we will be able to get all the answers in a short amount of time. It took us eight months to learn the history and to, to learn all the innuendos with FAA and all the other organizations that oversee, have oversight, and how it all plays together. So, I would like to see more presentations for our board and for the public, and have a robust conversation. So I would like to have time allocated for this, both early in the day and in the evening, so that people who are working have an opportunity to participate, and for us to get their feedback.
I agree with you, and I also wonder if January is too soon to have enough of the information and preparation, given the holidays we're going into now, or are in now. And I would hope that the kind of information we could present to the public is more than what we have the other day, in the sense that that was understandably so geared towards the authority, as opposed to a commission. I would like to see the pros and cons of both, not just the pros and cons to the commissioners and the airport itself and the public, with regards to the authority, but also for remaining as a commissioner. Commissioner Ann Sorgi brought up a number of points at our last meeting regarding that, which are all very good. So, you know, we, there were four options laid out, so let's look at the pros and cons of each, not just one. And that gives the public a better sense of, of what's being suggested, as well as we commissioners also.
Mr. Rushden.
In the information that we all received, I do believe that you will see the governance body and their reasons for rejecting two of the four, and only considering the last two, which is a rewrite of the existing contract or an authority. And there were pros and cons listed with that, but I think it would be also important for my fellow board members to review the existing contract that we have, to look at the fallacies within that contract, and the problems that that contract proposes or presents. Because I, like us, we as a board, we like to act in a certain fashion, but we like to have a certain sense of nimbleness to what we do. And when you look at the way the airport board has to operate on certain issues, we have to go through a whole, three different boards. We have to satisfy three different boards. And there may be good reason for that in some instances, but it does not allow the board to have a certain level of nimbleness when opportunities present. So, I would suggest or encourage that you review some of the information that's already been provided, and really take a good, hard look at that, so you can better understand. It was a learning process for all of us. It'll be a learning process once again.
No, I did, and I think that, as I said, it was geared, the pros and cons statement in there, and the way it was related relative to the other options, was really gearing it towards the authority, which I understand, because that's what the consultant was feeling was the best option. So it makes sense to me why he was doing that, but I think it needs to be backed off and, and an expansion on the other pros and cons for the commission and other options. Because there were some, but there were just a couple, as opposed to pages regarding the other, the authority itself, so they were kind of given short shrift.
Mr. Rushden.
Back to the public hearing dates, you know, I am fine with having, you know, a morning session and an evening session, and if we put it at the beginning of the meetings, the public hearing goes as long as you want it to go. So, you know, if we have a lot of input, we take a lot of input, and our executive meeting lasts a little longer, or our evening meeting lasts a little longer. I have no problem with that. So that'd be my suggestion.
Well, it wasn't, is that, you did conclude that to your motion, or I think you did, as far as?
Yes, the two reps to the board, the advisory board and the administrator, I think will be ready by that, that makes sense to me.
Well, some information, also, I think one of the pros of doing that way, there may be legitimate questions that come from the audience that we will not think of, so it doesn't mean we have to end at those two sessions. They could generate some very good questions, and we may want to have some more sessions, so this is kind of the beginning of the process. And remember, there is no timeline, there's no deadline. When we met as a group, we talked about getting this project completed by the end of 2020. So one of the misperceptions people had that you're going to be forced to vote on some changes in January or February, March, and that's not going to happen. And we talked about probably the earliest would be in the fall, and realistically, we're thinking it was going to take all of 2020 to work out all these issues.
When we post for the public hearing, I'd suggest that we also link the report that we had in the executive committee from the, from the airport board for public review.
And we'll buy some ads for the public hearing also, not just the legal notices, but people need to know about that, so we'll get some nice ads. But we could, at the end of the second hearing, do you mean want us to go to some more hearings?
That, I mean, it doesn't end with that. I think we, I think it's better to start it right away, because I think it is, we've already gone through a long process in getting to say that we, that the board that, that, you know, that worked in Traverse City concluded that the authority was probably the best way to go. But then, we know we have to bring it here, to, you know, in order to get all of us to see and decide if that's really the best thing for Leland County. You know, it's the best thing, it seemed like, from the information that I got, for the airport. Now we have to decide if it's the best thing for Leland County. And I think that's what, that's, the sooner we start that process, the, you know, the sooner we can give them a conclusion, one way or the other. Yes.
I would like, like to ask Commissioner Lautner if she recalls in 1995, the board's intent at that time, when they were looking at allowing the airport to move to an authority, and Leland County actually getting out of the airport agreement. Do you recall what the conversation was back then?
Back then, I don't remember the dollar amount exactly, but it seems like it was around fourteen thousand. Leland County was paying annually towards the airport, and we were the only, the only county doing it. And Grand Traverse was contributing, and Leland County was contributing. So that's, so from that came the questions. I think I raised a question, I think Alex wanted to raise a question, why are we, why are we paying money for the airport? So, from that, in no other counties, no other surrounding counties, even though it's a regional airport, it's used by everybody, et cetera. So, there was discussion, I don't remember necessarily of getting out of the airport, there was discussion of, of us not having to pay into the airport. And if we had to get out of the airport, maybe to get out of the payments to the airport, maybe that was where that, where that sprang from. Ultimately, we, they looked at it hard and determined that, yeah, there was no reason for us to continue to make that donation to the airport every year, so we stopped doing that. I do not remember any authority conversation at that time. It may have been just thrown out there, but we certainly had no, no hard discussions on that, unless Grand Traverse County did. If we got out, perhaps that was something that Grand Traverse County chose to do. There was discussions about the other counties, and I believe we asked them whether they would like to contribute to the airport, and that was pretty hard to know. So that's when we, we no longer donated to it.
I, if I may, I do know that one of the reasons that the city withdrew as an owner of the airport is, they were concerned at that time about the historical environmental costs that were a potential financial nightmare, so they got out of that arrangement and left it to the two counties. So there's a lot of little caveats that have gone on historically, and I do believe, though, that an authority was looked at in 1995. And Carrie, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, that's, that's my understanding, that in the mid-nineties, it was tossed around. I don't have that historical background or knowledge that Chuck Judson had, he was intimately involved back then, but that's my understanding, is that in the mid-nineties, an authority was tossed around as a possibility, but it didn't really go anywhere.
It may have been tossed around, even at the airport board at the time, and not necessarily at, at our board.
I mean, my understanding from what I've read and had the thing is that in ninety-five, Leland County asked for a look at rewriting, whether it would be the commission agreement, you know, and so that's where just authority was brought up at that time. But it was really, they were, it was about the money, I think, and it was about, do we have to rewrite the thing to not have to pay them money? I mean, we didn't have to rewrite it, I don't believe, and so it just went, it just was left the way it was.
That is my understanding based on.
Commissioner Russell, I have a valid point, because it triggered my memory, because I was at some meeting representing NMC at that time, about the government laws, because the laws were different back then. There was great concern at the college, at the city, at the airport, about liability for past contamination, because that was before brownfield, super cleanup dollars and so forth. And a lot of units of government were concerned, because a lot of those properties were donated to those units of government, and many of them were farmers at one time, and probably had pollution on the property. I know when I was at the college, we were very concerned with the maritime campuses now, because that was highly polluted. And we worked with Senator George Bigmanus to try to get the laws changed to provide some relief for these units of government. I, I think you're absolutely right, that was a major issue the city had with the airport.
I think today, one of the newer issues is the PFAS contamination. And as everyone knows, you know, firefighters know this very well, that, I think I'm saying it right, PFAS?
Yeah, PFAS, yeah.
Contamination, I have no doubts that there's contamination on the airport in regards to that, and I don't know yet if there's been any determination what our responsibility will be for the PFAS contamination.
Yeah, the whole PFAS issue is so new, they haven't really come up with any particular standards yet. There's, they're still in development and process, and how to even enforce that and require all that cleanup, because of course, it's going to be very expensive.
So, you know, there are some issues, and, you know, these are things, when we look at Leland County as a fifty percent owner in the entity, it's, I- When we look at Leland County as a 50% owner in the entity, it's, I, I have rentals. I'm responsible for the house, the roof, so on and so forth, you know. And we as Leland County may in fact, under a new program, have a little bit more responsibility financially or environmentally or who knows what. So the, I throw this out here today so that, you know, you kind of get a window of what could be. And, you know, if there's people out there that have, you know, want to have a conversation about it, then those are things we need to talk about.
Well, I'm just saying that we, you know, we, we're talking about January 14th and January 21st, right? And one would be at nine o'clock in the morning or nine.
Nine, 10 or whatever.
Right.
We could do it right at nine, not start the executive committees, just have a public hearing. Except the executive committee would start at the end of the public hearing.
Okay, right. And then the same thing would be at seven o'clock on the 21st. I mean, that's.
I think that's a great start.
So, did you want to make another comment or I was going to?
You know, if we're going to bring up the liability issue, we're going to have to understand what is our responsibility because under the EPA rules, they go back and after somebody, a previous owner that no longer owns it. So, you know, just because we're changing ownership doesn't necessarily relieve us of liability. So, you know, if we're going to talk about that, let's have a discussion about that.
I can tell you the specific concern was on Parsons Road. It used to be the Parsons Manufacturing, if you remember the history of Traverse City, airport, helicopter blades were made there.
Yep.
That became the Career Tech Center. They were sued and that lawsuit's been ongoing. And their concern was because that was where it is on the airport property and how far that would go. And there was a lot of legal issues in the '90s. And a lot of those laws have been modified because if you remember where Harvard Insurance is now, it used to be Ironworks.
Yep.
And that stayed vacant for years. No one wanted to touch it because liability. Where the maritime academy was, that was polluted property.
Right.
Where the college was, is polluted property. And there was great concern about all these lawsuits that are coming as technology was advancing and doing testing. Because there was meetings, I remember, where all the government units are very concerned about liability issues around that time period. I'm sure the airport was involved with that because of the person property.
And you also have to remember that airport was government property at one time too, you know, World War II. So, you know, who knows what happened back then.
We can blame it all on them.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
So I think you're absolutely correct. I think that had, I'm sure a factor in why Traverse City left and why there was probably concerns in Leland County and everybody else about John.
And there are a lot of things that have changed. We recognize that. But this is what I'm saying, we got to fully vet this.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Evans will get some nice ads out, other than just public service announcements so people know about it.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So then that brings us to number two, the sheriff's office marine division donation line.
I would move to allow the sheriff's office to begin a campaign to raise funds to place in the, to be placed in the LC SO Marine Safety Division Donation Line, account number 331-727-005 for the purchase of a patrol boat and/or associated equipment for the Marine Safety Division.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
We did have discussion on Tuesday though about not just doing this and asking the sheriff to move forward on a plan so that we had a budget, a long-term budget. And I think we ought to proceed with that as well.
Capital Improvement Plan.
Right. No, I, and then I think we did direct the sheriff to come up with one. I mean, maybe, so, I mean, I don't know if we're going to do it here at the board. I'm hoping.
Well, is that the second motion?
Yeah, I think he got the message.
Yeah, okay. All right. So then the 2020 potential state budget reductions.
Just a quick update. As far as I can tell, they're going to proceed and sign into law the revised budget would restore the funding, which for us, the main one is the real patrol. I have not heard of any hiccups. That should happen shortly. So at this time, I don't think we need to take any action. I hope we don't resolve by the end of this week.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah. And so that brings us to emergency management, the Verizon tower. I have a different motion here. It says, motion to approve the administrator and emergency management director to enter into negotiations with Verizon Wireless. That's the actual thing that we passed. It's not the one that's in these notes.
Correct.
So you need to so moved?
Yeah, I would move that if somebody would second it.
Second.
Is there any, any discussion? Yes. Commissioner Lautner.
I, I'm going to be brief because to say the least, I was very disappointed in the presentation last week. And I really find it's interesting that we would be the only spot that's going to work for Verizon. This is it. This is the only spot. So I would say if that's the case, we are, we would be sitting in the catbird seat and, and that we better negotiate awfully hard because we're going to have that tower on this campus. If we're going to open that door, which I'm not in favor of us doing, then we better negotiate very hard. You know, he may have been right. I don't know. If 85% of all the calls that come into 911 are from cell phone, is that, are those statistics from our county? Are they nationwide statistics or state? So that being said, that's not 85% of the phone calls that would be bouncing off that tower. Thousands a day will be personal calls and, and, you know, that does not fall in our purview. So I, I still would like to see them look further and beyond because I, I, I think it could be done. So that, that's why I will be supporting the motion.
Commissioner.
I kind of have a question. Maybe I don't have a clear understanding, but if Verizon is telling us this is the only location that will work, how is this different from, say, AT&amp;T or Sprint? Or how is it that the other utilities can get coverage and they can't? I guess I'm not, I don't understand this. Why is it, does anybody have an answer to that?
Well, I think AT&amp;T is on our tower.
AT&amp;T is on our tower?
Yeah.
Here?
So they have coverage here.
Okay.
Sorry, that's incorrect. That's good, correct. So where do they have theirs then?
They have a tower about a quarter mile from here in a parcel, new attachment. That's where AT&amp;T's tower is. A tower that's available for co-location should someone else want to be on it.
That tower's open for co-location? In other words, Verizon could negotiate with them to be on their tower? Is that what you're saying to us?
It could.
Could you state your name? I mean.
I'm sorry, Jim Farice.
Are you a citizen in Leland County, Jim?
Yes.
Okay. If I may ask, is your business part of the cell phone industry?
No, I own that parcel.
Okay. So you currently have a tower on your parcel?
There is a tower on the parcel, yes.
Okay. I don't know what the height of that is or if that meets the requirement. Do you know if it meets the requirement for Verizon?
It's, it's 55 feet. Ms. Zeitz can probably speak to some of the particulars too. She's been involved with Leland Township. It's the, not quoting chapter and verse, it's a 55-foot tower now. It can be raised, I believe, to 75 feet as part of a Michigan Co-location Act.
Commissioner Russell.
I think Melinda's question's a good one about looking at other opportunities. I know when I drive from here to Sutton's Bay on AT&amp;T, I lose signal. So that, that tower that he's referencing doesn't solve the problems between here and Sutton's Bay for AT&amp;T.
Commissioner Russell.
Yeah, the height of the one that's being proposed here is, is a much higher tower. And the 55, the ability to broadcast out is not nearly as great, which is why there's such a drop-off problem with AT&amp;T. And last week, might have been a bit longer, we had absolutely, it was the 14th. We have no, had no reception, not just one or two bars, zero reception in Leland in select places. And I talked with Matt Ansorgi to ask him to get in touch with AT&amp;T because many people now just have cell phones. They don't have landphones. And if there'd been an emergency and somebody was needing to get in touch with 911 or, or any other source for emergency help or non-emergency, they couldn't do it. So they did say that there was a tower malfunction. They had people out to repair it. But part of the problem is even on a good day, reception from AT&amp;T and many locations, I drop on 204, I drop on M22. So the ability to have another high tower that can co-locate, which they would here. Plus, they did say that our 911 system would also for free, you know, not paid for the equipment, but for free usage would be on that tower as well. So there are a lot of pluses to having, for cellular users, a better system than what we have right now. I don't know if that answers the question, but, well, you told me you can add to it.
Go ahead.
I can't answer that question. I'm not the expert. But what, you know, based on the testimony that we heard last week, I did not hear Melinda's question answered or whether there was a co-location site that couldn't fulfill the needs. So that's a question we can ask. But we can move forward with this negotiation and get those questions answered.
It doesn't commit us to anything.
Exactly.
This is just inter-negotiation.
I would be curious myself to see if they can co-locate what, you know, instead of building a whole brand-new tower, $600,000, if they put money into this other tower or whatever, however they do it, and expand the height of this tower, you know? They, they may not have researched all their opportunities. So I'll support that motion. Yeah.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes five to one. Thank you. So then that, then that brings us to the renewal of the hazardous mitigation plan. Commissioner Russell.
I move to authorize the Leland County Office of Emergency Management to work with Networks Northwest in submitting the application for the 2020 FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program for Planning and Development Updates for the Leland County All Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, zero. So the senior services, BASA, Commissioner Lautner.
I would move to accept contributions given to the Leland County Senior Services from Bay Area Senior Advocates for the senior support totaling $1,000 and placing to Leland County Senior Services BASA grant account ending in 678.000.
Board. Commissioner Russell.
What is the Senior Services BASA? What is that?
I was trying to remember.
Bay Area Senior.
Advocates.
Advocates? Thank you.
It's right in there.
Any other questions or statements? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, zero. That brings us then to the planning commission. Approval of the state remonumentation grant. Commissioner Russell.
I would move that the Board of Commissioners approve the 2020 Remonumentation Grant Award in the amount of $31,621 and submit all required documentation to the state by December 31st, 2019.
Board. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six, zero. That brings us then to the Park and Recreation Commission for approval of the draft. Casey's here, is he here or no?
No.
He and Eric on the clock.
We have Dave.
Dave here. Did you want to come forward and speak to it at all or? Do you have questions? That's I was wondering. Yes.
I have, we have one just very minor correction to make on, it would be on page 28. It's involving Soul and Township. And we've got it listed as a Soul and Township River Park. And a lot of names have been batted around the last few years. So that's why there's a lot of confusion. But we have to just officially change it to the Cedar Community Park. And then it would be official, so.
If you would get that information to me, email that and get that directed to, to Gazan Zubek so that can be.
Okay.
They would be just easier for Laurel. She's been in contact with them on a daily basis almost, making changes.
Excellent.
One other thing that I want to mention, during the executive board clause forwarded the resolution that needs to be passed tonight.
Right.
So that it's part of the package.
We do have a copy of it here. Everyone has a copy of the resolution.
We get a hard copy, right? Oh, there it is.
When this was presented last week, I found that I thought the report was incomplete. You know, we didn't have the goals that were set out and there was a few. I don't have that paperwork in front of me right now, but I thought the report was incomplete. So I'm quite surprised actually to see this resolution today and to have to vote on something that we haven't seen the whole, the final product, you might say.
Well, you have it now as far as my understanding.
Was it sent to us this day?
Well, late this afternoon, so it was.
It was after 3:00.
Yeah, so it's late.
Commissioner Russell.
Not yesterday. I think it came.
There's another revision sent at 3:14 today.
Well, I was in board meetings all day today, so unfortunately didn't get a chance to observe that. And.
I'm wondering if, if last week you were missing a particular point and that is what was not included last week was really the prioritization of the action plan and the goals that were stated in that, in what you had last week. But the prioritization of those was not included in that grid. That's what I think has been updated for you today. The goals were there and a statement of.
Okay, yes. The last few pages were not filled in.
And those were the, taking the statement of goals and action plans from the pages just previous to those and then prioritizing those through the coming years.
And what's your, do you have a timeline on this resolution? Are you, is there some sort of a timeline that you need to have this done today?
We need to have the five-year recreation plan accepted by the state prior to our application for the Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for Veronica Valley.
Okay. Are you going to apply before the end of the year?
No, the application date is April 1st.
Okay, so.
And, but the procedure, it could take a month to even two months for the state to approve that. Approve what you may approve tonight.
Sure.
And that has to be done before we can make that application.
The reason I ask that question is this board is going to have a special meeting towards the end of December and it would give us all an opportunity to review the item in its full as it was presented today at 3:17. Was it you said it was presented?
Yeah, it was after 3:00.
So I'm just wondering if we could postpone this.
Table?
Pardon me?
Are you tabling it?
I am postponing it until the special meeting or the end of the year meeting.
On December 31st.
Yes, on December 31st where this can be presented again to the board for a vote for final approval. It'll give us a chance to read it.
Does anyone have any suggestions to that?
I don't have any objections, if we can meet our deadlines.
And my only knowledge on that is the sooner it comes, the action is taken here, the more likely we'll get the state's action. It took two months, five years ago, for the state to respond and approve what you all did in December of last, five years ago, and it was December thirteenth, if I remember correctly, was that date. But it took, it took some time, that response from the state has to be done in the affirmative before we can even submit the application.
I understand that, we're only talking.
Yeah, and that's why.
A few short days, and my request was to postpone this until the next meeting before the end of the year, so you would have your document, you know.
To the best of my knowledge, that would not delay us.
Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge.
Okay, just for the record, the special main request was signed by Commissioner Bonnet, Rushden, and Ansorgi, or Wessel? Yeah, because you, I don't think you signed it. Do you feel comfortable adding it to that? Can we just add that as item number, whatever number?
Lead Number Five.
And you still agree with that, so we can add that in, I can just initial, and you agree?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so I have it in the record, it's, don't need a motion, but as long as you agree, we'll add that to the posting.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We're going to review it. Will there be somebody available for that meeting?
The date is thirty-first.
Yeah. One o'clock.
I'll be here.
Okay, you know, just on the off chance that somebody has a question.
Yes, there will be.
So we do have two commissioners that are on that, so, that are here, so I'm sure they can, they should be able to.
We have worked on the plan, we could respond to questions.
Okay. I would certainly make every effort to be available for questions, absolutely.
So then we'll move on to the county clerk and the year-end budget amendments.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
And happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move that we approve, authorize the county clerk to make any year-end adjustments and transfers deemed necessary to avoid year-end deficits in the various departments' budgets within the general fund, no transfers or adjustments to go beyond funds in contingency, all transfers, adjustments require the signature of the county clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Then the records preservation, what is it, co-file? Commissioner Wessel.
I move to waive the board policy on bid requirements and approve, authorize the county clerk to enter into the agreement of co-file for records preservation as outlined with a good faith estimate of eighty-nine eighty-eight, based on the page count submitted, with billing occurring on the actual page counts.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Brings us to daytime travel policy. Commissioner Suss.
I move to approve the revised Leland County Board Policy Number Twenty-two, travel policy as presented.
Second.
That changed with negotiations?
No, 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 that's, just for the record, there was a few grammar errors that Ms. Evans caught that we changed, but I didn't think you want to have copies of it just for those purposes, so thank you, Laura, for catching some of those issues.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero. That brings us to board and commission appointments.
Do we need a separate motion for each one, or can we do this as a group? Can we take a motion to approve the board appointments and commission appointments that we established at last week's meeting?
You could, unless someone objects and wants to go case by case.
Do you want to?
Are you making that a motion?
That's my motion.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero, thank you, thank you very much.
Easy way to do it.
Yes, okay.
I didn't object to any of them, so.
RMA. Scrapping to find where we are now, towards the end, yeah.
Well, my question was, I thought that vote was to vote on them all at one time, but we haven't voted on them.
No, his motion was to vote on them all at once.
To approve the recommendation.
Oh, okay.
From the committee of the whole.
Okay.
Right, Mr. Wessel, that's what.
I thought it was just to vote.
To approve them all as presented.
No, it was only if somebody, Commissioner Lauder.
I would move to approve the 2020 renewal for property and casualty insurance between Leland County and Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, MMRMA, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty-five dollars, funds to come from Fund eight-three-zero-point-eight-six-five-point-nine-five-four-point-zero-zero-zero, and waive board policy on bid requirements.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero, so that brings us to the administrators' evaluation.
The copy machine.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2020 copy machine? Sorry, I skipped that one.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move that we waive the board policy on bid requirements and approve the 2020 service-maintenance agreement renewal with Netlink's Business Solution, at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents, with twelve thousand, six ninety-four ninety cents to come from account number six-four-five dot zero-zero-zero dot zero-zero-zero dot eight-zero-one dot zero-zero-zero, and one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars to come from account ending in dot eight-zero-one dot zero-zero-zero.
Want to sneak that through?
Think so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
So the second on that was?
Commissioner Suss.
Of course.
I heard it. All right, and then, so now we're at the administrators' evaluation, I think you all have a copy of that. Do you want me to read through it, or just want to discuss it? It's all there, anybody can look at it if they want. Did you have a comment? Commissioner Wessel?
I have a couple of comments. One, I applaud the chair's summary, and thank you for doing that, and I think we all agree, by looking at the scores, that we're fortunate to have, Mr. Janik here is one of the longest-serving county administrators.
The longest now, as of last week.
And I wanted to, at our request, we did get.
Yes.
A sheet summarizing in the ten different counties. We didn't get Grand Traverse County, but I did look at Record Eagle, and that was considerably more, obviously. I'm not making a recommendation tonight, but I'd like to just suggest that we look at this spreadsheet and revisit this in January, if anybody had some ideas about any adjustments. We, Jet is making more than many counties, less than some, I was surprised by the counties that had much smaller budgets and much fewer people with some higher salaries. I also note that in our case, we have an administrator that does not have a HR office or director and works for the clerk's office on that. So I'm not making a recommendation, but I would just ask if there's interest that we look at and see if we could revisit that next, in January.
You can ask for it to be on?
You want it to be on the agenda.
I think it should be on the agenda for discussion.
All right, there you go.
We can do that. Yeah, as you know, any commissioner can ask anything.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So you want to endorse the recommendations officially?
What, what recommendation?
Just to endorse the evaluation as presented?
That you agree with it? I mean, there is somebody who disagrees with it.
What?
I move that we accept and approve the administrator evaluation as presented, along with a, an applause for our county administrator.
Second.
Commissioner Wessel.
Is this required under your contract or something like that, that we need to do something like this? I'm trying to understand why we are doing this.
Commissioner Wessel asked that.
Requested.
And I'll respond to that, I think, I think evaluation of the county administrator is a responsibility that we do share.
I don't intend to disagree, but I wanted to understand if it was a contractual obligation, or we're just doing it.
We used to do it every year, but, you know, we, now we've been doing it about every other year, you know, I think this is the second or third time that, you know, we use this form.
I think the fourth.
This is the fourth time?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lauder.
I do have one question about the survey, and I was just wondering why the information about each one of these administrators, what's the level of staff oversight that these other administrators have in compared to our administrator?
Meaning?
How many people?
How many people report to him?
How much oversight, yes, how many, how many?
Department heads, elected officials, et cetera?
Well, elected officials.
Yeah, it'd be just department heads and employees, that's your question, yeah.
Yes.
Well, but we're co-employers of department heads.
Yep, I have no.
The only thing that we really have much input on is wage, I understood, for an elected. Is that not correct?
I believe that would be correct, but we are co-employers.
But I guess what I'm trying to say is the responsibility that directly falls on our administrator's shoulders, how many departments are under his concern?
We can try to get that information.
As compared to other administrators, do they have as many, or do they have fewer? I just think it's.
It's a good question. This was actually done by another administrator, Ms. Garland from, I forgot which county, but.
Antrim.
Antrim?
No.
Mr. Garland?
Ms. Saki's bolded, would it be?
It's her, it's her, Ms. Saki, but I can send a, I give a list out, a question out and ask that question.
What's her oversight responsibilities?
Commissioner Wessel.
I want to clarify, are you asking how many people directly report to him, or are you asking for how many employees each county has?
How does the number of employees that report to our administrator, how is that, how does that differ across the board? You've got an administrator in here that's got fewer population, less taxable, and their salary is five thousand dollars more than our administrator.
And you know why?
Because, well, I'm not going to say what I was going to say.
Exactly, but I think we all know why.
Yeah, but my, to be fair, don't you think we need to compare, you know, his responsibilities to other administrators and their responsibilities?
I don't have a problem with that, but that's only, that's part of the picture.
Well, is there another part you want to look at?
Well, like we did on.
Commissioner Lauder.
Well, I, I think there are other, there's other variables, you know, such as personal situation, number one. Number two, like we get twelve more personal days, a couple more even than, like Antrim, but I think we get the most vacation personal days. One other, not only one other county does the vehicle allowance, we do. I'm not sure.
So we have a motion and a second? Have we passed that already, have we voted on that? I don't think we have.
We have not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Yeah, so we're supposed to. America and I enjoy working with each and every one of you. You're a diverse group of people, but it's always interesting. I need a chance to speak, you give a chance.
All right, so now we're at the labor contract.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is combine, I'm pleased to announce, we have a ton of agreements with five of the six labor unions, and as allowed by Michigan law, I'd like to go into closed session to give you board an update on all five of those at once, and hopefully we get done, it'll be a short discussion, we can come back and vote.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss the labor agreements.
Support.
This would have to be a roll call vote?
Yes, it does.
Commissioner Ansorgi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Lauder?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushden?
Yes.
Commissioner Suss?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Eric won't take off.
Okay. I'm going to ask for.
I know what you're asking.
Maybe it is in that song.
That's a non-dec.
The timer went off.
You stay two minutes on bachelor break. Unless you're writing off for a party break. I'm not writing off for a party break. I'm just kidding, yep. Yep. I was telling Deborah before that we didn't, you know, I mean, we haven't been writing out here for them, but we need to try to publicize the, you know, public. Yeah, and we'll get some ads in there too, give them the enterprise, of course. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. You're here to help you out. What are you guys?
We're just having a good time here.
Media friendly groups, right?
That's my favorite thing when I go to Sutton's Bay Theater, they always got that old thing and the guy who's.
I have a little. From nineteen seventy-eight, Hobart, Cleveland.
You're welcome.
Yeah, because on the bottom, this is nineteen seventy-eight.
Yeah, it's, it's old.
It's the same one for years.
Here was my question, how, how long have you been, when were you hired up?
I was hired February of twenty-twelve, Saturday, May of twenty-twelve.
Right before all of the things started getting taken care of around here.
Yes, yes.
Finally, finally.
And so you are officially the longest-serving county administrator.
The way your beard is here, seven years and seven.
The way your beard, that's.
And David Gillis, seven years and four.
And he's never going to Hawaii.
Yeah, I've never been to Hawaii. The first officer went on vacation to Hawaii and got fired while he was in Hawaii. True story, Larry Savage. He went to Hawaii.
Commissioner Wessel.
I move in closed session.
Second.
Okay, go back into regular.
There's two different motions here.
Oh, all right.
If you look in the back.
Ready for a debate?
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're back into regular session.
I would move that the board of commissioners approve the tentative two-year agreement reached by the employer, Leland County, and the union bargaining team for the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Dispatchers Unit. The board chairman is authorized to sign said labor contract following final composition of the 2020-21 contract and review by civil council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I would move to approve the tentative two-year contract reached by the, reached by the employer, Leland County, and the union bargaining team for the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Corrections Officers Unit. The board chairman is authorized to sign said labor contract following final composition of the 2020-21 contract and review by civil council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I would move that the board of commissioners approve the tentative two-year agreement reached by the employer, Leland County, and the union bargaining team for the Teamsters Number 214 General Unit. The board chairman is authorized to sign said labor contract following final composition of the 2020-21 contract and review by civil council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I would move that the board of commissioners approve the tentative two-year agreement reached by the employer, Leland County, and the union bargaining team for the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Corrections Command Unit. The board chairman is authorized to sign said labor contract following final composition of the 2020-21 contract and review by civil council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
I would move that the board of commissioners approve the tentative two-year contract reached by the employer, Leland County, and the union bargaining team for the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Law Enforcement Command Unit. The board chairman is authorized to sign said labor contract following a final composition of the 2020-21 contract and review by civil council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
And just for information, all the contracts are drawn up by our legal counsel. Which I think is important.
That is. All right, so then that brings us to review of financials. Any questions? I just had one, one about, do we buy the supplies for the cleaning? You know, I saw some kind of biochemical.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is what, yeah. I just thought it was funny that they bought two exactly the same things at the same time. All right. Committee, any committee reports or anything? No? All right, how about special reports? No? About public comment? Please come forward.
Good evening again.
Good evening. Good state your name?
I need to find out who I am.
Someone watching the video may not know who you are.
Well, you look familiar.
Steve Mikowski, Lincoln.
Sorry.
Comments about Verizon. I had spent over four hours with track phone trying to connect the new phone. And they say there are serious problems in the area that cannot connect it. We need phones for our emergency reasons, our health reasons. And I cannot get a phone connected here. One of our phones still existing is on the 3 system. This one, they told me, I'd be on Verizon's 4 system. I cannot get anything in my house. I cannot get no signal. They even sent me a new SIM card and tried again, again. I'm telling you, I'm four hours on the phone with these people. You know, they have given up on me now after four weeks. There's something going on with Verizon and TNT. I've got some documents off the internet that is not very good for us here at this time because of the transition that's going on. And I think that needs to be turned up, and I'm curious why the county is in a hurry to get involved with putting new towers in the public's property. I'd like to have a lot more answers on that. If I can't get a cell phone to work in my place for emergency reasons, I suspect if I went to somebody else, I might get it, but I don't know whether it's, it's a problem because they're switching from 3G to 4G? I do not know. But I consider this to be an extremely serious problem, and I've heard some other comments today about it. I'm also here to give, to talk about a special year-end awards to commissioners. This is going to be the Golden Baton Award to two county commissioners for beating electors into submission, to vote for an unneeded new tax for early childhood development without an honest, proper analysis of need, necessity, justification, but loaded with personal feelings and feelings of all the 42 or 47 members of the committee who are almost all government employees. I'm unable to recall that those commissioners stated on their platform before election that they were going to give us new taxes. So my awards go to two people, Patricia Sotis Little and Tony Ansorkey. With that, I want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope we do better next year on issues of this nature. This was a very unusual issue, it was handled very poorly by this commission. We're doing things that are not mandatory, not essential. The state doesn't recognize this as a problem, there's no state tax for this, and we are doing it our own. We're low-ranging, and we're giving all the money we collect into salaries, and now we're going to advance monies for all this. Something is amiss among us, the way we spend money. We better find a way to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
And the other public comment. Saying none of them, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Sotis Little?
I, I just want to acknowledge Matt Ansorkey's effort. I know when we had the down, the lack of ability to connect with our cellular phones on AT&amp;T, he was on the phone for hours trying to reach the right person, and finally, he said he, he's found who, it never happens again, who he needs to call, and will keep that number handy. But it was quite an effort for him to chase down and find the right person in a system that it's not easy to find who we need to talk to to get a problem solved. So I just wanted to acknowledge his extra effort and appreciation for that.
Commissioner Lautner?
I, I have a comment, I did have a comment, but I missed, I missed what, what you were saying, that he helped you track down somebody from?
No, 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 he, he tracked down the executive in AT&amp;T that he needed to reach to say we had a problem here in Leland County, that the AT&amp;T service wasn't working, and they said it was a malfunction of equipment.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
My comment was, and I do apologize for not bringing it up during our tower discussion, but the Leland County Planning Commission voted tonight, just before this meeting, I think it was 7-0, to do a, the permit review, I don't have all the wording, but for the, for the tower on this campus, they feel like it should come for the planning missions, for them to review. And of course, they don't make recommendations, but whether it's in the whole CIP plan was a question, and so their, that's their motion is to have it go to them. It should probably be January.
Any other comments? So that brings us to approval of financials.
I would recommend approval of claims and accounts, $598,427.3.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I would.
Motion passes 6-0.
Move to approve post-audit, $2,214,728.58.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Eric, turn.
Jet, I can't wait to see if there's a northern Leland County photo.
Take a look, take a look, open it up. Check the multiple.
December.